Yes, it is 7:00 PM now.
All right, folks, I'm going to convene the, and it's a poor adjective, but for state code purposes, we're required to call it an emergency meeting. And emergencies are defined pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter 6, Article 9A, Section 3H, which certainly the situation with the global pandemic qualifies to have an emergency meeting. There also have been State Ethics Commission opinions given in just the last couple of days that we've become privy to, and cities and counties all over the state are following this process. So I have a short statement to read, and then I'm going to ask council to take action on 10 different city initiatives that I would like to put in place immediately following this evening's regular meeting. Good evening. I again want to reassure the citizens of our BU community that our city is working closely with county and state health department officials regarding the threat posed by the coronavirus. I spoke with Sue McKissick, Director of our County Health Department, just this morning. We continue to have conversations with our school system, and I spoke with Wesleyan President Joel Thierstein this morning. We've reached out to Sarah Campbell, who's here this evening, Director of our senior center inquiring as to how we can help our most vulnerable, that is, our elderly. Everyone in our city organization is here to minimize as much as possible the threat posed to our citizenry by COVID-19. We will be having twice-per-week teleconferences with health department, healthcare workers, and county representatives. We will continue to be fully collaborative and interactive as public officials as we collectively address this health crisis. While there are centuries of quality service to our city represented in this room this evening, I can assure you that none of us ever signed on to tackle a world pandemic. It simply wasn't on anyone's checklist. I wish none of us ever had to learn new virus phraseology, such as social distancing, self-quarantine, global pandemic, COVID-19, shelter-in-place, flattening the curve, or the one I detest the most, the new normal. We are all working under declared state and federal emergencies. I am saddened by the difficult but very correct decisions to send our college students home for the rest of the semester, to close our public schools, and to cancel our strawberry festival. Our restaurants and pubs have gone silent except for takeout. Closures of our movie theater, bowling alley, jester line, and virtually all things recreational is terrible but necessary. It is imperative that as an organization that our city continue to offer our most essential services, delivery of utilities, water, sewage, waste collection, and first response from our police and fire departments. In order to assure continuity of all of those services, we need to protect the health of our employees first and foremost while they discharge these important tasks. Also, our citizenry will be better protected from this health threat if they're not out and about tending to nonessential chores. To that end, and consistent with what many of our sister cities have invoked, I am proposing our council approve the following emergency measures until our state and federal authorities have determined that the threat has passed. First, all city facilities effective immediately, or at least following the conclusion of this evening's regular meeting, will be restricted to employees only. While our city facilities will continue to be staffed and important work executed, the general public will not be permitted physical access to these facilities with the exception of general deliveries to our facilities and further with exception to our solid waste transfer station that will continue to receive materials. City Hall, our public safety complex, our water and sewer plants, the streets garage, Stocker Youth and Community Center, the Colonial Theater, and the Charles W. Gibson Memorial Library will all be closed to the general public until further notice. Two, subject to supervisor approval, certain employees may be authorized to work from home, though given the nature of what we do as an organization, those are very few in number. For employees required to be at their workstations, we will seek to maintain six feet social distancing to minimize virus exposure. Three, all city departments shall engage in reasonable and appropriate cleaning and disinfection exercises to minimize exposure to the virus. Four, municipal court will be suspended until further notice, and I think it's fair to say we're looking at 30 days or longer before court will resume. Please call 472-1651 for assistance with any matters related to a citation or Buchanan Municipal Court issue. Five, while we are not closing parks or our river trail, park restrooms will be locked due to recurrent theft and vandalism. Park users should maintain the minimal six feet social distancing, and groups of 10 or more is strictly prohibited and will be monitored by our police department. We will suspend park pavilion rentals until this state of emergency has been lifted. Six, gatherings of 10 or more people should not occur anywhere within our corporate limits, and meetings of 10 or more city employees shall not occur. Seven, please call 472-1651 for assistance with paying your water utility bills. The city offers an online bill pay and pay-by-phone options. The city also has a payment drop box in the rear of City Hall. Eight, our city will not terminate essential utility services of any customer during the pendency of this state of emergency. However, it is important to recognize that all customers shall ultimately be held fully accountable for the cost of utility services received. Nine, our city will partner with downtown restaurants to establish curbside pickup through special parking space designations for takeout orders, all to minimize virus exposure by helping to keep our restaurants up and running until this health threat has passed. Ten, our city strongly recommends self-quarantine measures by all of our citizens to the maximum extent possible until this health threat has passed. The more we isolate ourselves from others, the less likely we are to contract the virus. I would be remiss if I failed to observe the stalwart service to this community of not only our excellent city staff, but the hospital and healthcare employees who are on the front line of battling this threat. Also, we appreciate the staffs at our grocery stores who are working overtime to stock shelves so that we may all continue to be fed. At some point in the future, we'll celebrate Walmart Day as the efforts of their store's employees have been monumental during this crisis. We are all in this together, and I know as we get through the coming weeks that we'll remain strong as a community with minimal impact upon the health of our residents. Anyone having an emergency should contact 911 as you normally would. The best source of information about COVID-19 remains the Centers for Disease Control website. Council, you heard these initiatives that we would like to kick off immediately. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Skinner first. Is that you, Mr. Thomas, the second? Skinner's motion, Thomas's second, Pam, you're a third.
No, I don't.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I would just tell you that this is a very highly fluid situation, and there may be additional measures that as a council we'll want to consider in the coming days. I hope and pray that this is the only emergency meeting that we'll have to have, but it's possible that we will have to reconvene and consider additional measures. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that during the emergency session, singularly to address emergency measures, the motion passed unanimously. With that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn our emergency meeting and convene into regular session.
Second.
Albaugh.
Albaugh's motion, Bucklew's second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We adjourn from our emergency meeting. Does anybody need a drink or a restroom break, or are we ready to roll? Ready to get started into?
Nine minutes.
All right. Maybe the next one will last that long, right? That's what your hope is, Mr. Owens?
Give me a moment.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular session, the March 19 session of our city council. I would like to convene our meeting with our traditional moment of silent reflection, especially remembering, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Thomas here in just a second, our good friend who directed the Wesleyan Physical Plant and had a very prevalent presence for so many years, he and his wife Trina and their entire family. We lost Terry Doberstein last week. We want to remember him, and we also want to remember everybody, not just in the state of West Virginia, but throughout our great nation and throughout the world who have been impacted by the COVID-19 virus. And that includes everybody in this room. Dave, did you want to say anything about Terry?
Well, I had a very unusual circumstance a week ago last Saturday, which is really a blessing in many ways. Terry called me up after the West Virginia Baylor game and chatted for a few minutes. He said, "What'd you think of that game, Thomas?" I said, "I thought they were playing tonight," so I was reading one of my books with my dog. And he said, "Well, I didn't call you for the game anyway, so I called you to say goodbye." And I started blubbering a little bit. He did too, and he had asked his family to leave the room before he called me. I had told him that my little dog, which is a Shih Tzu named Abigail, knew I was crying, came up on my chest and put her head on my neck, and she started crying. So we both celebrated for a little bit, because how often do you get the chance to say goodbye to one of the most important people in life? And we've known each other for well over 45 years. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that Randy Harris and Amy Cook lost their 30, 31-year-old son last Thursday in an ATV wreck, and that was a real shock also. So I've had two friends of mine that had some very unusual experiences, needless to say. You don't say you love somebody very often, especially to another man, but I did love Terry Doberstein. He was a great role model for a lot of people. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Let's have our moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. One of our old guard, former part-time city employee, Sarah Campbell, would you be so kind as to read us in our pledge to the flag?
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few guests. I would tell you that I had all kinds of folks in the next couple of three meetings that we wanted to recognize, one of which was Bob Post, with his efforts with the American Legion, the whole civics and patriotism stuff that's been launched statewide largely originated right here in Buchanan. So we'll get back to Bob soon enough. And we also had a state wrestling champ in February. We also had a couple of, one of the relay teams and an individual winner at states in swimming. I promise you, we'll have, we'll get all these folks in the queue and recognize them in a future meeting. But it's just imprudent for us to bring unnecessary bodies together when we're supposed to be practicing this social distancing thing. We do have with us Catherine Norco, our new main person down at the Charles W. Gibson Memorial Library, and you go by Kathy, right Kathy?
Yeah, I go by Kathy.
You want to bring us greetings from the board of directors at the library? We've been collaborating superbly here in recent weeks, and we want to keep that energy going.
Sure. Well, you took care of my first bullet point, which was we were going to close on Monday, but we'll take care of that. I'll put the signs up tonight before I go home. Since January, we've had about 903 visitors to the library, which is a fairly strong number in and of itself. Our overall circulation has been about 2,800 for two months. About 86% of that is physical, and about 14% of that is digital, which I find impressive because as far as I know, we haven't done much to emphasize our digital resources. So that number will probably go up because we're all pushing the digital resources since people can't come in our doors. I say, big projects we've been working on, our summer reading program, which even though we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, we're still working on that in the background because we want, hopefully this will pass by summer. If it doesn't, we'll reassess, but we're trying to develop some sort of passive reading program that'll keep kids reading over the summer, and hopefully we'll start working with Stocker, Stocker Youth Center in the next couple of months on that.
That's awesome.
Again, it's all on hold. One of our biggest talking points that I have, I'm really excited about, is we've tripled the number of public access computers we have at the library. Before, when I, when I started in January, we had one computer from, we won't even go with how old it was, I can't remember. It is, we now have three brand-new computers, all of them up to date, Windows 10, or Windows, Windows 7. Whatever, I don't speak technology. That's why I have tech departments.
You learn this stuff, right?
That's why I have technology departments.
You stay in the yard.
But I'm really excited that we have the two are already up and working for the public, and we're still working on a third spot for our third computer. So if you walk through the library and you see a great spot, just let me know, because we're still working on it. And really, the last talking point I have is we have been working quite diligently over the last couple of months. There's only three of us on the staff right now. So everything, I keep getting told, is pretty amazing, but we've been working really hard on getting the overcrowding, our, just a general state of untidiness and a lack of good organization straightened up, and we're looking really nice at the moment. And on our docket for, to deal with in the next year, we're going to have to look at window replacements. window replacements, electrical rewiring, and possibly some plumbing issues, but we have our capital funds and we have grants too. So, but that's just what we have in the works, nothing like taking on the world all at once, it feels like. So, I think that's what I have for the library right now.
We would love to have you back every couple of three months to give updates on your programs.
I'd be really happy to do that.
And I would tell you, as we learn more about some of the finances of the library, that trust fund with the $700,000 in it is pretty much unrestricted as we understand it.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like, so.
When I mentioned that to our city architect, Bryson, he was like, "Oh, let me design something for them," you know? So Bryson might be coming down to talk with you about his ideas.
You can send him, he and I, we've got an offer here actually, don't forget from my last job, so.
Brilliant, brilliant designer, so.
So, yeah.
We'll, we'll try to do better by the old place, and we appreciate the information.
Well, we're 79 years old. We've probably outlasted our original infrastructure in that building, and so I hate to say we're going to have to take on everything at once, but we're going to have to take on everything in a fairly quickly timed manner before things.
It makes sense to, if you're going to disrupt things, to disrupt it and do all the work and then put it back together.
Yeah, libraries are not places that do well with long drawn-out projects. That tends to make people just not want to come visit you anymore, so.
79 is pretty young, yes.
Well, and it doesn't help that we have a nice alternative, you know, three miles down the road, so, yeah, we kind of keep our customers happy.
There's been misinformation about, you know, some folks have theorized that that building was built by Frank Lloyd Wright or designed by him. It's not.
I don't think it is.
But it does, it does look like something that it could have.
Art deco.
That genre.
It does, yeah. It's the right era.
1940-ish, yeah.
So, we probably need to do a little bit more work talking about the actual design and architecture and history of the building.
It's a beautiful building.
But it is really neat.
And it's, and it's needed right there.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Oh, yeah. We moved, I think we've moved our face, I think, so.
Well, we would be remiss if we didn't observe some of the folks over the years, in addition to the Buchanan Lions Club, people who served on that board for decades. And I'm talking Bill O'Brien Senior, Myron Himes, Jerry Steed, Mary Alice Thurman, the Barlow's. When I first came to town 37 years ago, those were the folks that babysat that place. It was their baby. And then we've evolved to another very passionate group of folks that serve as directors. Our hats off to you, and we'll, we'll continue to try to feature the place as much as we can, and look forward to your future presentations. Does anybody have any questions for Kathy while she's here? We'll, we'll have her back again soon. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks for coming out.
Do you have a copy of the notes you have that you could give me, or?
Can I, can I email it?
Yeah.
After the meeting, I'll do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Ordinarily, I would say you're welcome to stay, but I'd rather stick a stick in my eye. Tonight, I would encourage folks after they've done their presentations to, to head hall. We want to be consistent with this message of social distancing and minimizing our time with you, so. Not because we want to, but it's just the prudent thing to do right now.
I already interact with about, on average, 30 people a day, and this crisis has long been looming in my mind because we're just, we can't continue the way we have.
Do you have a re-mail with Ruth Amby?
She, she'll email to Teresa.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Teresa?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy. Thanks for coming, Paul. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Next up, well, let me just say that the Mary Augusta Gibson bio is in your packet. We dedicated the placard in front of the Gibson Library. We kept our six feet apart. We only had nine folks show up. I was lamenting with Amby earlier, you know, Mary Augusta Gibson died on New Year's Eve of 1939. And over the past 81 years, almost 81 years, going on 81 years since her passing, the library has been designated as the Charles W. Gibson Memorial Library. She named it after her husband. There's a, there's a huge analogy that can be drawn to the Stockard Youth Center, because with the Stockard Youth Center, Tommy Stockard, the mega millionaire lawyer, never gave Buchanan anything. He left his entire vast fortune to the University of Virginia Law School, and he left her such amount as will not result in federal, state inheritance tax, which at that point in 1993, '94, was, '93, was $600,000. So that's what she got. She left her entire estate. She lived for another year. She had an attorney, Roy Law, do her, well, she left the entire estate to establish the Stockard Youth Center. It's a very similar kind of thing with Mary Gibson. She left, the very first bequest in her will was $10,000 to the city to establish a public library, and then she left something for her sister, and something for Wesleyan, and something for the Baptist Church, and something for the Methodist Church, and then she left the rest and residue of her estate, which was many more thousands of dollars, to the city to further embellish the realization of the city library. So it, it's kind of ironic that this woman that for 81 years has kind of been in the shadows, nobody knew about, it took a world pandemic to keep the good word from getting out even further today, because we had been planning this dedication for months. But please, keep the, keep the name Mary Augusta Gibson in your best memories. Finally, Sarah Campbell is a guest. Sarah, you're bringing us greetings on behalf of the Senior Center, and it's the March for Meals campaign. I was supposed to, this Tuesday, help deliver meals, and it took a world pandemic to keep me out from knocking on some old folks like Dave Thomas's door, right?
Yeah, so.
That's a joke, Dave.
I'm not going to agree with that. I'm, mm. It's nice to be back. I think that everyone here is just constantly adjusting to our ever-changing and unprecedented events, including us at the Senior Center. And originally, of course, I was here to talk about specifically what we're doing with March for Meals. And I'm still here to talk about Meals on Wheels, but also to kind of want to take this opportunity again to talk about what we're doing in this time as well at the Senior Center, to make sure that our, our seniors and our community are still receiving the essential services that we provide. For those of you who don't know what the Senior Center does in Hall, because sometimes I find that the questions I answer the most are what exactly do we do? We provide multiple services. We do have normally classes and activities at our center. We do provide in-home care through seven different programs, most of which are grant and either state or federally funded. And then we provide both congregate, so onsite meals, and then we provide home-delivered meals through our Meals on Wheels partnership. The last couple of programs that we provide are Country Roads Transit, that is a partnership that we work for to make sure that our seniors are able to ride the vans for free on the route van. Anyone 60 and over, we partner with them to make sure that those route rides are free. And then anyone who is 60 and over can get $15 worth of on-demand rides with a senior pass, and all we have to do is contact Country Roads and set that up. So that's some of the activities and services that we provide in our community. As we've been responding to COVID-19, we have put a hold on our March for Meals, which is a campaign where we raise more awareness about Meals on Wheels. We're still raising lots of awareness about Meals on Wheels, especially as we are kind of transferring some of those people who would normally come into our center through public transit onto that service temporarily. And then also looking for ways to make sure that people who might be in need temporarily are still getting meals, even if they've not come in before. The one way that we're doing that is providing curbside pickup meals, like many of the restaurants are doing. People can call in by 10:30, let us know that they want a meal, and then they can pick up between 11:30 and 12:30. They drive up our alley, they stop outside the doors, one of our staff members comes out and meets them and brings them their meal and checks on them, and then they continue on their way. We are really encouraging the community to please spread that information, because the best thing that we can do right now is, is make sure people know that we're here and that they can call us if they need help, and that they're taking advantage of that service, that they're not sitting at home afraid and not having access to things because of it. I had some really nice notes, and you guys hit me in the heartstrings tonight. I know that today especially, we've had several calls where our clients have just really been expressing how appreciative they are of not just what we're doing, but the fact that those essential services haven't been canceled. So thank you for the measures you're taking. I know that those are relieving to a lot of people, and I hope that we can continue to do that. The other thing that I would like to talk about is just how people can continue to help us. Here soon, we're probably going to end up needing volunteers as we continue to look to how to get meals to people and, and doing that. That's always something we need, not only now, but we're still going to need that when we make it through this. So that's part of what March for Meals is. And then the other part of it is, of course, always needing funds. Our Meals on Wheels and our congregate site is, of course, grant-funded. A meal onsite is $8.25, and we get reimbursed $5.25. A congregate meal, or a home-delivered meal has, is costing us about $11, and we only get reimbursed $5.75. So the rest of that money gets made up in donations, and you can actually provide one person for a whole week their meals for $40. So we're encouraging people to definitely be thinking of us in this time. If they're thinking about where they can give, where they can, can make a difference, they can make a difference by giving towards that. We do not, we do not ask our seniors to pay for their meals. It's a suggested donation, and we don't watch how much they put in. Normally, when people would come in, they would just kind of drop their money in a, in a box that's sitting at the front, and, and no one would know. Right now, they're kind of handing it to us through the windows, they're giving. We're just trying to be careful of that, making sure we're still taking precautions for them in that moment. So I brought a couple of things I left in the back. If anyone's interested, there are brochures that talk about what services we do provide. We are going to continue to provide those services for as long as we are able and in as much capacity, and continue to check on our seniors for, that might request, you know, that we temporarily hold their services. On the days that they usually get those, we would still be calling them and checking on them. And we have winded all face-to-face assessments, so that will be one thing that we are no longer doing. We aren't going into homes and doing our usual visits. We'll be contacting solely over the phone until the state asks us or gives us permission to not do. So. Are there any questions? That's a lot of information, I know.
How's the climate at the center right now? I mean, is there, we've heard for weeks and I guess a couple of months now about the impact of COVID-19 relative to seniors. Is the anxiety level substantial, I would assume? What have you observed?
I think I would, I would say it's a mix. We have some people who are doing really well, and I would say that those are probably our seniors that I've seen who are more mobile, who are financially stable, who aren't, you know, are still able to go out and do everything on their own. I have seen some concern and indefinitely some fear for those individuals who are further out in our communities, those individuals who do not have access to transportation and are finding that they're, they're more afraid, I think honestly, of getting on transportation and going out in public than they were three or four days ago. It's decreasing so rapidly, and the, and the climate and the attitude that I've seen has changed from Monday to today. Monday, we were good to go. People were, were pretty positive. Tuesday, I came in and had to cancel our congregate meal and call every client and tell them that we were moving to curbside pickup, and that.
And the events.
Yeah, and all of our events were canceled effective Tuesday. And I think between that and the news, there's some concern. There's concern, I think specifically, over how long am I going to be able to get the things I need from the grocery store? Do I have access to the grocery store? Are the people who usually bringing me the things that I need going to be able to do that? So, so there's definitely concern. Our best efforts here is, we as a staff are continuing to remain positive and assure them, and, and we've also encouraged anyone, even if we've never served them before, if they run into hardship, to please call us so that we can either send them help or work with other organizations and churches who have said that they're here to help in this, to make sure that they get what they need, whether that's groceries or, Lord forbid, toilet paper, to make sure that those, those items do get to them.
Are you maintaining a full staff at this point?
Yes, we have a small staff onsite. The majority of our employees are in-home care providers, and we have given direction to them that they are to continue services as long as both they and our clients are healthy. Some of our clients, of course, do require 24-hour care, in which case we will do everything to prioritize the highest need clients first. We are running into some issues with employees who, of course, don't have childcare and cannot work, and we are looking to find solutions if there is something that they can do onsite, whether that's make phone calls for a couple hours to adjust to that. Onsite, we are keeping just what we need. That includes kitchen staff, the pool kitchen staff, and our drivers, and then we are required from the state to continue to answer our phones. So for now, we are working onsite. If the situation continues to progress, we will, of course, look at giving our employees the ability to work from home. I think at that point, we would probably just be myself and the kitchen staff onsite during the day.
Other questions for Sarah while she is here? We'll have you back.
Okay.
And I'm good for the.
Yeah, we're going to reschedule our events and probably move them, if we're up and running, we'll move them to May because that's older Americans month, so we'll just adapt what we were planning for this month. But there are some, I did bring some information packets to you from March for Meals, if you're just looking for some of the statistics and stuff that we were sharing, that's back there as well.
All of our friends at Dussey Graves that we're thinking about.
Well, we'll be appreciative of that. Thank you guys for your.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Hey, call me if you need me. I will, Mary.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to invoke chair's prerogative and bring F6 to the table, discussion, possible action, employee health insurance. We have Pete Thaxton and his colleague Nancy. I apologize, your last name is escaping me.
It's Lucas.
Is it Lucas? Nancy Lucas. I know it now. They've come here from Huntington, and you're going to head back tonight, I guess. Is that right? So if everybody's good with bringing this matter to the table so that we can get them back on the road, it's captioned F6, discussion, possible action concerning employee health insurance, and they're both here to offer comments as needed. As we know, a year ago at this time, we jumped from state, we jumped from Blue Cross Blue Shield to a quasi partial self-insured program. And in the recent weeks, we have had conversation with Pete Thaxton, who is Senior Vice President with USI Insurance Services and is a consultant, for want of a better adjective, with the PEIA. So we've had a couple of discussions with Pete. We've seen a lot of information about cost savings without compromise to our employees' insurance needs. We believe that if we would transition from our current partially self-insured program to PEIA, that we could save roughly a half a million dollars a year. Pete, do you want to speak to the matter in general, or do you want me to have counsel ask you questions? We've already had opportunity, all of us, to interact with you.
Yeah, any kind of questions, if there was anything that I overlooked, that I studied. I know there's questions about HSA versus HRA, so I'm open for whatever you want.
I guess what's the difference in how does it impact the city and the employees?
Sure. Okay, so an HRA, Health Reimbursement Account, that is a more limited form of assisting the employees and their dependents, in that it is basically set up for medical expenses, medical dental revision, out-of-pocket expenses, that is limited to just that, okay? It can be structured in a manner of several different ways. So in other words, you could say, okay, we want to put X amount of dollars in there, and we're not going, there's no, no carryovers or anything like that, so it's in there for the plan year, and if you use it, fine. If you don't, then it reverts back to, it's the city money all along, okay? So there's no real flexibility, other than what it's doing is assisting in reducing out-of-pocket expenses to pay claims on an ongoing basis. Yeah, deductible, and because everything goes to the deductible in that particular plan, the Plan C, so they go to the physician's office and it's $100, there's money for that, okay?
Is it the same amount of money for that as it would be if we used an HSA? Gross amount. Gross amount.
Yes, you could pick whatever number you want to use, okay? Now, again, up to, on the HSA, up to federal limit sizes, amounts, okay? So, it functions the same as an HSA relative to today's claims to assist the employees in reducing claims, okay, or out-of-pocket expenses. Again, it is city money. So, the money, you apply X amount to the plan, if you will, per single and family and so on. Again, if it's used, it's used. You can do a carryover feature, in other words, and I'm being hypothetical. Let's say you put in, for simplistic numbers, a thousand dollars for the year. You can, you can set it up to where if you use the money, fine. If you don't, it comes back, if you will. Or you can set it up to the carryover and say, okay, here's this thousand dollars. If there's any or all left, that's fine, that'll carry over to next year and we're going to put another thousand in there, okay?
You're going to make everyone whole every year at the end.
Yeah, you don't have to do.
Some people use all of it, some people use 75%.
Right.
It formed the same function in both cases.
That is correct.
And at the end, it just reverts back.
On the HRA, it is the city money the whole time. It remains the city money the whole time.
And with the HSA, it becomes the employees' funds.
That is correct.
Question for you. Have you found, I forget, 28 years, 29 years, or whatever it is in the industry, with HSAs, do you ever find that employees are, since they are accruing their own sort of savings account?
Right.
Might they be more reluctant with an HSA versus the other plan where the money is the city's to not pursue?
Yes.
Health stuff because it's like, I don't want to tap into my money. Do you see that sometimes?
Yeah, because, I mean, on the HRA side, theoretically speaking, it's free money. If I use it, I use it. If I don't, I don't. But it's free money there for me.
House money.
Right, exactly. Conversely, the HSA, which is a much more flexible and plan, if you will, because you can use it for savings, investing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, not to mention that you can use it for premiums for COBRA and down the road Medicare and that kind of thing, that once people understand that concept and see what it can do, because the investment side of the savings also grows tax-free as well, again, assuming it's used to qualify expenses. But you don't have tax liability on that money. So, it's a, it's a much broader benefit because there's so many different things that an employee, independent, can use it for, all right? That it's not just about the actual claims dollars, it's down the road, as I've already described, but then also because of the savings feature of being able to build up a nest egg to where, like I've mentioned, that it's a, think of it as like a 401K driven by medical. So, it's a much broader benefit for the employee, but as soon as it hits that account, they own it.
Question, another question for you. Counsel, feel free to jump in at any time. If, we don't need to make the decision tonight to identify which plan we want to pursue through PEIA. We just simply need to take action before the end of this month to pull out, if that's our intent, to pull out of our self-insurance program. Is that correct?
That would be correct based on what I've seen, yes.
So, some of what your concern is, I understand, I get it. And I think that's something that we can be discussing in the next two or three years.
Well, I think if we're talking about health insurance and covering deductibles and costs, where I think we're kind of crossing a bridge over into an enhanced retirement account of some sort, which crosses over expectations down the road that this, that we're doing two, trying to do two things with one. And I'd like to try to delineate in as far as being a fiduciary for the city. I want to provide those services that we're trying to replace from our current vendors, which I think we're adding and have a much better plan, but yet be prudent with the funds to continue, be able to continually provide those deductibles.
Right. And understand a couple of things about that. What I always do, of course, with the permission of the clients, when I do employee meetings, is to make clear that this is subject to change. It could be a situation, like you could start out with an HSA and you say, whoa, now, you know, things got bad with everything and we experienced a downturn, to where you could convert to an HRA next year or you could reduce the amounts that you put into an HSA.
And conversely, could we go from an HRA?
Yes, you could. Yes, you could. So, there's all kinds of flexibility that you could do with it.
So, there's a quantitative element to our consideration of changing providers, but there's also a qualitative element that Ambi could speak to. I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, but it's been sometimes nightmarish with these thousands of XL lines and the whole 83 employees and 300 people in the plan and the whole bit. Do you want to speak to counsel again about that element of this?
Before Ambi does that, can I throw something in?
Sure, absolutely.
The, I want to make sure that individuals do not think that because when you throw out that half a million dollars in savings, the, that's not because of a deterioration of the, what our employees are going to receive from the medical profession.
That's correct.
It's because of the extremely comprehensive cost savings that PEIA has compared to some other programs out there. And I think that's important to note. We're not losing quality. You're joining 20,000 other people to leverage your medical expenses. We're a victim of a very small pool. 85, 87 employees. We knew that was a risk going in, but, you know, this, the presentation that Marion Peak made, Marion, right?
Yeah.
That's an inside joke, but the.
Paul John liked it.
The presentation that Pete Nancy made the last Friday, you know, it's pretty obvious that we should be making this change. And Ambi will probably say we saved 126,000 bucks almost immediately because of the way PEIA does their retired employee.
Yes, the way that I, what we left was what we call a fully funded plan, where you pay the premium in and it doesn't matter what those claims are, you pay that premium and then what could potentially happen is the following year, you may get an increase. But with this type of self-insurance, you have to watch every claim that comes in, record every claim that comes in, in the way that we are funded separately. We have separate funds throughout our entity that I have to keep this all separate. I have to know how much belongs to general fund, water, waste, sanitary, and I have to keep all of those claims coming in separate. And then I have to know what we funded to all of those claims separately. So, there's where we're running into some issues. It is much more work to maintain records for this type of insurance. And I'm not an insurance agent, so it's kind of uncomfortable when there's things that come up, especially when you start hitting stop losses and they're asking you, well, you should maybe be covering certain things and we need your permission to pay these certain things. So, it really makes it difficult and worrisome to deal with some of these things. I mean, the most recent one was how are you going to fund the pandemic testing? I mean, I am not a doctor and I'm not an insurance agent. If they need it, give it to them. And then you're going to probably say, why did you spend $100,000? So, I mean, I don't like that situation. Fully funded is what this other plan is through PEIA. Had we had this plan versus the plan we have now, we truly would have, and we're not finished with the one we're on now, we're going to have some run out of some claims. But at this point, if we paid premiums we have right now, we truly would have saved about half a million dollars in funds because the PEIA bill goes away.
And administratively, we saved a lot of your time and your staff's time with tracking this. Is that a fair statement? Mr. O'Neill, have you reviewed the notification requirements under our current plan, the quasi self-insured plan, that you know what we need to do?
You have a 90-day, 90-day notice period to, on the administration side, which would put us at the end of this month.
So, if the city council tonight were to opt out of the current self, quasi self-insured plan and to go aboard with PEIA, one of the elements of action would involve you and Ambi doing the do notice to our current enterprise to let them know that we're opting out.
We have a window of open enrollment. Is that changing those numbers since of the, so open enrollment is very soon? Okay.
It starts April 2nd to May 15th.
So, we're clear, the self-insured plan would last, would endure through June 30th. And then there's going to be a period of three, six months, maybe a little longer, depending upon who the medical claimants are, that we would have some cost runs out there with the old plan. So, that counsel needs to be aware of that. We're still on the hook for some of those expenses.
Got to fix it as soon as we can, so.
Well, you know, if it was 50,000 a year, which is still a lot of money, we might scratch our heads a little bit, but when we're talking a half a million dollars a year in savings, year one, I can't imagine how we could do anything else but make the move.
This question may be out of the weeds a little bit, Pete. But from an actuarial standpoint, do you have any data or feeling on the difference between the HRA and the HSA? The point was made, maybe the employee would be less likely to go to a doctor if, under the HSA, because that's their saving, that's their money than an HRA. So, is there a chance or has there been any knowledge of employees not seeking appropriate medical attention because they don't want to spend their money?
I think you could clearly argue that point, okay? But my offset to that is, is that in the scheme of things, a hundred dollar office visit, I don't necessarily think that if somebody's really sick, that's going to stop them, okay, for one. For two, when you look at it nationally from an actuarial standpoint, and frankly, I mean, you don't need to get it out, but the rate structure of PEIA, the Plan C, which is the only plan that's qualified for the HSA, the rates are much lower. And the reason they're much lower is because now it's consumer-driven. It's their money, it's, you know, like I've mentioned the other, you know, I have a $25 physician office, I don't care what they charge. Let's call a spade a spade. I don't care what they charge because I just know I'm on the hook for $25. When it's coming out of my savings, my debit card, okay, now I'm thinking a little longer and harder. And all of a sudden, you're probably starting to read where this telemedicine is exploding nationwide right now. Why? And one of the things we talk about, not just because it's cheaper, but now people don't have to go in public. People don't have to go to a germ-infested pool of a physician's office hospital or an urgent care, which, again, it's more economical. And we educate people on these things, the employees, so that they understand it because, again, consumer-driven. So, there's no question, the actuarial national studies show that utilization is lower on the HSA, no question about it.
Pete, we, last two or three, three years, I guess, we've done employee surveys and we asked about all kinds of things. And there's a series of health insurance, medical insurance questions on the survey. And this year, they were skew. Many, 33, I think, employees cited that there were communication issues with our current provider. You indicated during your previous presentation to the council that you or Nancy would make it a point to come up monthly and meet with our employees. Anybody's got a question or an issue, they'll, they'll basically be able to schedule an opportunity to sit down with you all and work out these issues. Is that right?
Yes. And they would have direct access to us as well, by phone or email or whatever, you know, so I don't, you know, they have a claim issue or they don't understand this, who do I call about adding some, you know, whatever it may be. They'll have access to us. And so, when we do the employee meetings, and I will add that with all these circumstances, we'll do whatever y'all want to do. I mean, and we told the county the same thing. If you want to do something less than 10, keep everybody six feet apart, we'll accommodate, you know, in terms of if we have to lengthen it, so that's not a problem. So, frankly, to me, even though I'm this is named as a consultant, if you will, it's no different to me than handling the Blue Cross plan or the Ioga Plan with Blue Cross. I mean, we have ongoing communications with employees and employer.
Mr. Skinner is our resident insurance bureau. Will I be getting questions for Mr. Thaxton?
No, I mean, we had a very lengthy discussion last week. You know, we moved last year, we were, we were told that it was going to be a substantial savings and it just didn't pan out. And so, you know, and there were some in the room at the time that said, huh, this may not be the savings that you think it's going to be. But, you know, we received, we received several years of increases from Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it just seemed like every year, it just, when your premium's over a million dollars, 10, 12, 13% is 100, 120, 130,000 dollars. And that is hard to swallow with stagnant revenue every single year. People, the public says, live within your means. Well, we try, but when you add those kind of costs on top of it, our revenues stay the same, we have to look somewhere. It's, you know, we tried something. It didn't really work for us. So, I've been, Ambi knows this because I've been in her office, I'm like, Ambi, PEIA? I don't know about this. I don't like giving, I don't like giving the authority and control over to the state of West Virginia. You just don't know. In a volatile year, if they need to rob this thing, they could. But, you know, I don't think that's going to happen now or in the next three years. I think it's important that we do stick with this for a minimum of three years. I think you'd agree. We don't want to get ourselves into a point of shopping every year. That doesn't look good for us or to potential, because I know this game too. So, I would hope that if we do this tonight, we do it for three years, let's see how it works. And I, it has my support, so.
Mary, you have any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Thaxton?
I don't.
Pam, any questions?
Everything covered.
Counsel, it's my recommendation that we take the measure tonight and I'd entertain a motion that we terminate our partial self-insured, health insurance plan for our employees effective June 30th and July 1st, move to PEIA with Mr. Thaxton being our representative. I have a motion by Mr. Ryland, is that who was the second?
I, Pam, I think we did. I don't know.
I'll give this one to Pam. So, motion by Ryland, second by Buckloo. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
One question about process. Will he come, will we have another vote as to what we exactly select? I understand right now, we're terminating our plan. Are we going to?
Between now and July?
Yeah, are we going to have another vote as to exactly what plan we select and what HRA versus HSA to start out with? I mean, is that, I'm asking about, I guess, for our, more our internal process.
We need to tell you.
Yeah, I mean, because when we go out to do the employee meetings, obviously.
We got to know what we're going out there to talk about.
What do you need to know? How soon?
I mean, the sooner the better, like anything else. I mean, the timeline relative to the PEI open enrollment, assuming that does not change, is ample time relative to ID cards.
So, will April be good?
Yeah, because before we get in front of the employees, you know, because there's going to be an education process.
Is there time between now and then? Do a little sheet explaining the actual cost to the city on any employee of both plans, kind of HRA, HSA?
In terms of what it would be to the city?
Yes.
Yeah, I could do, I could do that and understand that the maximum costs, okay, will be the same either way. It's just a matter of how much is utilized.
Exactly.
And I will tell you that, and again, I want to reiterate that where I talked about either the previous Campbell County eruption, I've got permission for that. But again, where Kerry Wallace at the county did a claim study from two plan years ago, about 20. Carrie Wallace at the county did a claim study from two plan years ago, about 22-ish, 19 singles and three families maxed out, they're deductibles, okay, which means that there's 60-ish or so that did not. It was partial or none, okay. Obviously, on the HSA side, you fund what you fund. It is what it is, whether they did or not, okay. Conversely, on the HRA, there's no question that you would have a lower exposure. The exposure would be the same, but you'd have a lower cost.
Right.
I, I think that, I'm a proponent of HSAs. I just am. I understand the cost differential. I'm a proponent of it because I understand the broadness of it all. And I think that even though you're right, you're crossing over into a whole nother world, so to speak. But when you're talking, there's a half million dollars there, even factoring in that. And you're not locked into anything. As, you know, you're not locked into this is how much you got to do every year, once you commit. You've got HSA to HRA. And frankly, what I would see, envision, and again, I've got a lot of these under the Independent Oil and Gas Association plan, to where, starting with the, and again, you all do what you want to do, but starting with an HSA, and if you experience financial heartburn, for whatever reason, down the road, then you potentially switch over to the HRA to cut that expense.
Other questions?
The rate sheet that you provided us before, does that have the difference between the HSA and the HRA?
No, the HR, we'd be using the same plan. So Plan C is what you'd use.
Okay.
And what I would suggest is this, that, as again, we've got whatever, six or seven plans. I would not fund any HR. HSA, we got to do Plan C. You got to. Qualified by law. HRAs is a different story. You can do it for anything. I would not do any HRA funding if they don't do Plan C. If you do Plan C, say you decide to do the HRA, you're going to do Plans, Plan C is the only one that this is eligible for.
That's right. We went through that.
And I would, that because, and then the other thing is, is what I mentioned about the recommendation of contributions, okay? You use Plan C for your ongoing contribution, which is zero, okay? And then frankly, what I would do, and I can do it on your all's behalf, as a recommendation, is take employee, you know, you can have any plan you want, okay? But this is what it's going to cost you if you don't do Plan C.
Well, let me make this suggestion to the council. We still have our insurance committee in place. Why don't we work with Pete during the next three going on four weeks, so that we can come back to the full council with more specific recommendations?
And we have them.
Open enrollment, so we're, we're, yeah, April 2nd through May 15th. So we're going to have to work pretty quickly. Open enrollment, they have to, they would enroll.
I'm not talking about going with PEIA. I'm talking about which plan. You indicated we've got some time to identify the specific plan.
We do, but also on the documentation that we sent in, because see, an employee, let's say you do an HSA.
Right.
Because there's a part of the enrollment process for the HSA, and again, hypothetically, the city's going to do X amount, but they have to find out if they're going to do more on their own.
It all has to be processed at one time.
Yes.
They need to know which plan we're going to take before we start this open enrollment. They can't just enroll them and then tell them later you're going to be on CHSA or HRA.
An open enrollment would start in April.
Yes.
And how much time do we have?
Open enrollment extends to May 15.
So we, so my, my earlier question, that Mr. Sanders also alluded to, we've got the month of April to lock in which plan we want to go with. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
We have to have everything, well, that's.
I guess two weeks.
We can't really do any physical enrollments until we know what you're going to do.
Then you guys take a week and, this isn't something.
Well, I think, could we meet as soon as maybe next week or, or?
Yeah. I think we can have a decision at the next council meeting.
Sure.
When's the next camp?
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Yeah. That doesn't compromise, we don't, we don't want to, we, we, we tonight are ready to take action, to go with PEIA.
Yes.
It's just which plan.
And I would suggest to you, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, okay, the HSA is going to cost you more to do it, because we're going to be funding X amount for everybody. But it's also much broader on behalf of the employee. You're doing more than just funding today's plan.
It becomes, it becomes a employee benefit and an attraction to work here and a longevity tool, is what it becomes.
And an extra week of vacation.
There you go.
And frankly, just so you stand.
I'm not advocating.
Yeah, once we decide, once you all, once you all decide to do what you're going to do, my job is to be the cheerleader, so to speak.
Yeah.
To be the messenger and the cheerleader.
Right.
So from, again, from a cost standpoint, the HSA is going to be more, because you're funding X amount for everybody, okay? Conversely, on the HRA side, it's really based on utilization.
Well, we can dial you up.
Yes.
Actually.
Yes.
Let me.
And I could do, I'm going to be out there, but I can do conference or whatever.
Yeah, we'll figure out those details.
But I would say that the sooner a decision's made, that that way we're communicating PEIA, we get everything ready and loaded to do.
You all have to do everything on your side of the house and have it ready for when you come in.
Yes.
To implement it.
So the insurance, the insurance committee is myself, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Thomas, and Ambie.
Can I sit in on that as well?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. We just don't want to get into open governmental proceeding.
Okay.
If we had four, that is an issue. So I said yes, and I meant no.
Okay. I agree. I appreciate.
Otherwise, we've got a quorum of our council.
Well, I'll take the invitation, but I'm not going to campus.
Well, or you could put plugs in your ears and you wouldn't know what was being said.
I understand.
And we can, we, from our end, can set up like a, so whatever you want to do, how many conference calls from where your location is. It shouldn't take long. I mean, we don't have, it's not like we have a long list of things to consider that are.
20, 30 minutes.
Right, yeah.
And it, and it will be a recommendation.
We'll take a break now if you guys want to go.
It'll be a recommendation back to the council if we take action. We'll put it on the agenda for April 2, final decision on which plan. But we want to make it clear that the motion that's on the table right now, unless there's any further discussion, is to terminate.
Right.
Our partially self-insured plan and to evolve to PEIA effective July 1.
Sure.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No.
I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes will reflect that the motion carries unanimously. We'll work out the details until now, next week. We'll find a time that works for you and the insurance committee.
Sure.
And then we'll decide at the April 2 meeting which specific plan of PEIA we want to go with.
Okay. One last thing. That's, that's it. That voicemail did not transfer to my cell. If you need me for anything, sidebars, go to my cell. Just call my cell. I won't worry about the office. Actually, we're shut down two weeks.
Closed down anyway, right?
Not for me anyway. So always call me on the cell.
I get up at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I don't sleep very well. That would be a good time.
That's fine.
Yeah, please.
Pete could have been me.
Just call me on the cell.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a safe, safe trip home.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, folks.
Nancy wore the town colors tonight.
Yeah, she is. She is. She is. She's going to close the deal.
That's right.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Department of Board reports. First up is our information coordinator, grant researcher, writer, Callie Crowden-Sams. Callie, how's it going?
It's going well, thank you. Of course, I would have said something if we did receive any messages, but we haven't received any messages by email on this meeting thus far. As far as what I've been working on, just COVID-19, getting communications out there about resources with the state DHHR, the CDC. We've created a new webpage, part of our website. So as soon as you go to our website now, you'll see the, the CDC's, their replica of the disease. You click on that button, you can't miss it. It's right there. Everyone's used to seeing that now, so they know what it means. It takes you to our section of the website that has information, both national, global, and as well as the local information that I think people are really needing to find out. So I'll be following up with Sarah, because if she has more information that she would like to add, as far as being able to pick up meals, drive-through service at the senior center, that's something we could have on there. Lisa Wharton with the hospital had reached out, and we have the Do View Medicine St. Joe's flyer is up. The health department, information from our local health department is up. So we're getting that information out there. I've been participating, as yourself and other staff have, with the local planning and mitigation efforts. We had the Tuesday conference call, and we'll be doing those twice weekly. The next one being tomorrow morning. I've been following Governor Justice's press conferences, as well as the president's. So I'm just trying to stay on top of the COVID-19 information and get that out to our residents and others in the county as well. Just a little bit of housekeeping on some grants as well. Our REAP report is due for the recycling truck. I'll be keeping an eye out. There's an extension on the Assistance to Firefighters grant. So the SAFER will not open until that has closed, which they extended till tomorrow. So I expect the SAFER to open immediately following the closing of the Assistance to Firefighters grants. You also have in later in strategic, a support letter, letter of support for an Appalachian Regional Commission proposal that is being put forth by the Mountaineer Trail Network. That bill did pass, so Uptown County and the City of Buchanan is now a part of the Mountaineer Recreation Authority. And so that was good news, this legislative session. And so now we hope to hopefully be able to take part in that. And they are putting forth an application to the Appalachian Regional Commission's power program. And that will, Preston County highlighted that this past year. And we hope that we might be one of the counties then that gets to do the implementation. And that's all I have.
I can't believe we were ever left out of that.
I know.
I mean, it makes, geographically, culturally, it makes no sense.
Well, we're in now.
Good job.
Not just myself, but my neighbors, our friends that cheat worked really hard on that. Laura Meadows and Carrie Wallace locally really worked hard to get our, Senator Gold Hamilton worked hard on that, to get that passed as well. So.
That's great.
Everyone from our area, of course, we did letters of support on that. So we were all pushing for it, and it worked.
That's super. Tell me if I need to do thank yous and toohs.
Okay.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. Oh, I should have asked. Any, any questions for Callie?
There's a F1 here, Mount, is there any action that needs to be taken on that, since she just?
You want to get Callie out, is that what you're saying?
She's got to stay here for that. I just noticed it was what she just.
That would be fine if you like, because we are doing the online form at all, so we stay.
Do it, Mayor, let her go.
That's, that's the only thing we need you for as a.
Well, now she's going to stay, right?
All right, I'll invoke chair prerogative and bring F1 to the table.
You can put the computer here and I can see.
The caption for F1 is, "Mountaineer Trail Network Application Regional Commission, ARC Power Implementation Grant, Letter of Support." And is the form in the packet? I think I already saw it, right?
It is. There's a draft in there. We don't have to edit to them until next week. So if you had any edits, we could submit those. Otherwise, the submit wasn't in there. So you could take a moment to look at it.
Subject to any non-material edits that might come up in the, between now and next week, I'd entertain a motion that we authorize application of this plan.
Some moves.
A motion by Skinner, a second by all ball. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Callie, the willowmeister is waiting for you.
Okay, well, Randy, I haven't received a message yet, but if you wanted to periodically check it.
You want to reposition Randy now, is that it?
Will that, will that be you to reach over here?
I can move it there, yes.
Thank you.
Can you just send Callie anywhere? Will it reach here?
I'll do my best to get it right over there, somewhere where you can check it.
Mr. Arnold, our Public Works Director. How are things going?
Very good. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, sir.
I've got a pretty, thank you, Randy. I've got a pretty lengthy report, thanks to our, and since we're live tonight, thanks to our engineer, Jay Hall.
Yeah, well, you'll have that. The engineers are very long.
I've been working with the crew, and I'm taking an online class to renew my certified playground inspector's license. The water department's repaired three leaks, installed a hydrant at Pike Lane, installed emission boxes for the early warning monitoring system, removed a hydrant on Brushy Fort that was on an online, installed a valve at the airport road. And this week, I'll be working on a service at Stoney Run, performing maintenance on the booster station, and installing fire service this week or next at Fish Hawk Acres. Sewer Department, 33 West Sewer Extension, we have all the permits and the project signs are installed. Right away, it's been brush hogged, and we will begin construction activities as soon as the CJ Martin project out on Brushy Fort is completed. Crew one's back to working on the CJ Martin project. And about a week of good weather, they should have that completed. Crew two, they've repaired a storm sewer on College Avenue, installed a tap on Brushy Fort, repaired the sewer at Go Mart, and are working on a storm sewer repair at 180 Camden Avenue. Maintenance crew installed power to the pump station on Cleveland Avenue. And the plant crew, the lab passed their lab certification inspection, which is a pretty big deal. All tests were great, so good news there. The street department continues to work on the theater on rainy days. The gallery is completed, and we're working on restrooms. Continue to work on sidewalks on Madison and Spring Streets. We will have, once that portion's completed, we will have installed 12 new ADA compliant ramps between Spring and Madison, Florida Street area. So that's, that's good news. Engineering, city's community rating system, Jay began working on the annual CRS update as required by FEMA. And the annual CRS update is due May 1. By continuing to participate in the CRS program, the city residents in the special flood hazard areas who have flood insurance receive a 10% discount on their policies. The US EPA Risk Assessment Emergency Response Plan, he's began, or began working on that. It's a required risk assessment, emergency response plan, required as a result of the American Water Infrastructure Act. The risk assessment is due in a letter in June 30, 2021. And six months after the submission of the risk assessment, both plans will be submitted electronically. The plans will be a coordinated effort between city home, water department personnel in regards to data research and input. FEMA Generator Hazard Mitigation Grant Number Two. While waiting for FEMA's decision on Grant One, he began working on specifications drawing and design calculations. The second grant involves a new generator at the water treatment plant, five new generators at various sanitary sewer lift stations, and 11 new manual transfer switches in various sanitary sewer lift stations. The Generator Hazard Mitigation Grant Number One, the bid package, approximately 95% complete, still waiting approval from FEMA to relocate the raw water intake generator. Once the decision's reached, then the project will go out to bid. Waiting on approval for change of scope request for both Grant One and Two. The early warning monitoring system maintenance equipment purchase, the bid openings for both the boat and the trailer package, and the air conditioning unit was held on March 12. And the apparent low bidder for one, Contract One, the Great Outdoors Marine with a bid of $13,45114, which was the boat and trailer. And the low bidder for Contract Two was Lowe's here in Buchanan, which was the air conditioner for $469. Gateway West Phase Two Construction, the bid package for the purchase and delivery of the 29 LED street light assemblies that will be required for Phase Two portion of projects completed. And the project is currently out for bids. The bid opening will be March 26, 2020, at 4:00 PM. And those lights will be going on West Main Street, just to clarify, not Main Street.
I was thrilled that we're finally getting lights on downtown Buchanan. That's a, it's a great thing.
Well, it's very dark now anyway.
Okay.
We don't have any.
We'll take the old lamps down.
You always said you want to use candles, so.
Well, that's all I have, Mayor, Council, unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry Arnold. You want to go? Sorry, we were going to let you go, but Randy's, Randy's got a question. Go ahead. No, we insist.
I'm good.
Go on, go on.
I will, I will say that we have, as everyone else, you know, we've been dealing with this, this COVID-19 thing. And, you know, we've instructed as best we can, trying to protect our employees. We're taking every step that's recommended by the health department, by sanitation of our, of our resources and our buildings, our trucks. So, and again, folks, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep keeping on. We have to keep our services going.
Yeah. Keep our guys healthy, as healthy as possible, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Lance.
Thanks.
Finance Director, Ambie Jenkins. She just says finance. He's Director of Finance and Administration.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Channel Three. These gentlemen here are live streaming this program for the citizens, and we asked them if they could do that, and they were kind enough to do it, and we want to thank them for, for live streaming for us.
Thank you.
Good job, Callie.
So balances in your enterprise funds at the end of February. Waste Collection Board in checking money market, $635,861. CDs, $57,586. Sanitary Board had checking, $701,423, and the CDs were $314,172. The Water Board's $270,136, and their CDs are $960,423. And the Consolidated Public Works Board was $126,026 in checking, and there's a cemetery CD for $230,348. Council approved opening an interest-bearing checking account with a local bank a couple council meetings ago for the sales tax. However, the market interest rates have tanked, so that particular bank couldn't offer anything near what we thought we could get from them. So I'd like to look again at some better rates and maybe some that have some better online banking, since we're not going to get any better rates, and come back to council with an approval. I'm going to have to have something opened up in April, so the next council meeting, I'm going to bring something back to you and get an account open for the sales tax. We have to have something to put that money in. I'm reminding everybody, we have several methods of paying your bill, and now that the public isn't coming into City Hall, we can do quite a bit over the phone. If you go to our website, we have online payments. You can pay your bill through IVR or phone calls. You can call here, 304-472-1651, 472-1430, 472-4620. We also have a 1-866 number, 933-4026. If you call us, we can operate, we can do quite a bit of business just over the phone, and we can figure out how to handle it without you having to come in here and trying to make it more convenient for you that you can't come in here. Other than that, invoices worth noting, Shreve Drive Wall, $3,520, that's in your bills tonight to be approved. Robert Bell, we expensed $13,000 for a 2005 Freightliner boom truck for the Street Department to help them get to some higher places and help trim some trees. And then later in the budget, I want to go over the budget that you're going to approve tonight, that, by the way, the Auditor's Office will not give us an extension on approval. It has to be approved by the end of this month, so we're going to address that tonight, too.
Questions, Abby? Abby, thanks. Tell the guys, we appreciate them all.
Thank you, Abby.
Let me see, Chief Matt Gregory. Chief, how's it going?
Hello. I have a few updates just concerning the current status of the Police Department. Some of this will be a little bit of a reiteration from your statement, as well as what Callie had shared with us, so just bear with me with that. The Police Department is staying in regular contact with various public safety agencies, both locally through our OEM, Fire Department EMS, other health officials, certainly our Health Department, but also statewide as well. We are receiving regular communication from Charleston in regards to, and this is by extension to CDC as well, in regards to guidelines from law enforcement in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. These resources, these guidelines have been disseminated and shared with all the Police Department staff, and we are taking all the necessary precautions in accordance with CDC guidance in that regard. As Callie mentioned earlier, we are also participating in the biweekly briefings that is being co-sponsored by both the Health Department and the Upstate Office of Emergency Management. These meetings are tremendous lines of communication to not only the public safety agencies of Buchanan and Upstate County, but all the key community stakeholders, to include the educational component with both public education, as well as the college, but also many other organizations. So great communication is being had in that regard, and we do anticipate those to continue in the interim. Part of these briefings, our VIPS unit is also taking part, and they do remain ready to assist as necessary. I've been in regular communication with Steve Wyckoff, our VIPS coordinator, concerning these initiatives. The Police Department is maintaining regular service. We are still maintaining regular patrols. We are at 100% of our staff, and that includes our pro-officer, since schools have closed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. He is back on the road and able to assist with calls. One thing to note, through the comm center, who is our primary emergency dispatch point, if a caller happens to call comm center, whether it be through 911 or through their non-emergency line, they may be asked a few additional screening questions. Not just us, but all public safety agencies are working hand in hand with, with dispatchers in an effort to enhance our safety and have a safer response in the midst of these issues. And so they may ask the caller additional screening questions in terms of any illnesses that the caller, anybody with the caller, may be experiencing, so that we can respond more effectively in terms of just how we respond, and specifically with our personal protection equipment. When I constructed the report, obviously, this was well before the emergency meeting tonight, so there's some subtle differences in terms of the status of our lobby and the status of the business section of the Police Department. So with the closing of all city buildings, our lobby, too, will be closed. However, we have the ability to, if an individual needs a copy of a report, which is a lot of our business through the day, of folks coming into the Police Department, we do have the ability to do that electronically. So if somebody desires, whether it be an accident report or an offense report, telephone us at 472-5723, the Police Department number, or they can either email myself, mattgregory@baccanonpolice.com, or our administrative assistant, tim smith@baccanonpolice.com. And so we would be able to work with anybody, again, needing a copy of an accident or offense report electronically. If somebody needs to speak to an officer, and it's not an emergency through, and again, these are methods of contact are during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. If somebody needs to speak to an officer, and it's not an emergency during those time periods, we encourage you to call 472-5723, the Police Department number, or 472-9550, which is the non-emergency number to the comm center. And obviously, if it's an emergency at any time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, dial 911. And again, we are maintaining regular service, regular patrols, at 100% of our staffing right now. Finally, the Police Department has, I mentioned personal protection equipment. We're making every effort to make sure we are properly equipped. We've recently acquired masks and medical gloves from the Upstate Health Department that we rationed out to each of our officers. We do have a portion in supply, should they be utilized. This is also to include protection for our VIPS, when and if they are activated to help in the community in any capacity. We do, and we are currently continuing our open lines of communication with various agencies to maintain resupply. That includes OEM, we have requests in through, through them, as well as state agencies. I've been in regular contact with the Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, just as of this afternoon, concerning resupply. Mayor, that's all I have. I'll answer those questions.
Questions for Chief Gregory?
I've got one. When you talked about the, the numbers, phones, and if your office is closed in the lobby, is it, is there a sign out there if somebody walks in?
Yeah, we will have a sign at the front entrance with all of that information that I just shared, directing folks who.
So it is.
Whether it be an administrative need, or if they need to speak to an officer, we have those.
And Abby, the office staff out there know that also, too, right? Okay, figured as much. Thank you.
Tell the folks to be safe first and foremost. Think about them every time we hear the siren go off now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence and information, you got a whole bunch of stuff in your package. Oh, Tom, I almost forgot about you. Tom is going to tell us, he'll be back up in a little bit.
I thought we were just going quickly in light of the spirit of the state of emergency.
Yeah. That hasn't worked out for us.
I'll be very brief. The one thing that I'll mention is that the city's petition for motion to intervene with Public Service Commission relative to the Tenertown Public Service District matter was granted by the Public Service Commission, so we can proceed with that. I won't get into the, kind of, the details of it, but it's going to be, it's a limited, it's a limited basis that we can intervene on, having to do with process, not substance of the, of the decision. More information will come out on that further as time goes on, and I'll be back up here shortly for three ordinances.
Questions of general nature for Tom, we're going to see him here again in just a couple, a couple of few minutes. Okay, now correspondence and information. You've got the statement from last Friday concerning the Corona COVID-19 virus. You've got city PR COVID-19 preparedness action encouraging social distancing. You got a notice from the West Virginia Public Service Commission that went out to all utilities to suspend, recommending the suspension of utility service terminations. It was not an order, it was a recommendation. Fourth, there's an executed property purchase agreement with Citizens Bank regarding the 15 Madison Street property. Fifth, there's the notice to lay the levy on Tuesday, April 21st at 9:00 a.m. Sixth, there's a notice of the proposed adoption of an amendment to the municipal zoning ordinance. Seventh, there's the report of the cat and dog activity from the Upstate County Commission for February 2020. Eight, David How, Certified Public Accountant's Engagement Letter for Audit Year Ending June 30, 2019. Nine is Mayor's Proclamation Regarding Youth Art Month for March of 2020. Ten, there's some talking points I'm going to go over with you in just a couple of minutes relative to the Madison Street property. There's the Mayor's Remarks on Black Balloon Day, March 6, 2020. There's the Mayor's Statement Regarding Purchase Citizens Bank Property on Madison Street and the Gift Acceptance for SYCC. And lastly, there's the Fish Hawk Acres zoning form that goes to Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. The consent agenda consists of three items that I'd solicit your approval of. If you act on this motion, you'd be approving the minutes from our last regular meeting of March 5th, as well as the meeting, the special meeting minutes for February 25th and March 13th. Teresa sent all of those minutes out to us. You'd also be approving the building and wiring permits, and you would also be approving payment of the general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
Sub move.
A motion by Skinner. Can I have a second to his motion? Second by Albaugh, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. We have seven strategic matters, two of which we've already acted upon, F1 and F6. We'll take them up in remaining order. First off is F2, approval of the budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Abby, do you want to speak to that before we act on it?
Well, I, I did, because I, you know, I just kind of want to go over the highlights of it, so that, you know, the community will know about what was basically in the budget. You reviewed it several times, line by line, but I would like to kind of go over it real quick if I can.
Sure.
As quickly as I can. So the budget is for the year, beginning July 1st, 2020, ending June 30, 2021. The total budget is $5,154,466. This is the first year that we'll have sales tax as part of our tool to help go towards needed expenses. So in revenues, just want to let you know, we lowered the BNO slightly due to the reduction that was required for implementing the sales tax. We had to lower hotel motel, as it has been decreasing lately, and we didn't want to overexpend on that. The Public Safety Complex fee was removed and will not be collected after April 1st this year. The Public Safety Complex property was paid off. Part of the Gateway West Project grant will flow into 2021, so that was budgeted. The Prevention Resource Officer Grant funding was also eliminated, eliminated for this budget because they are going to use officers out of the city limits. $954,440 of this budget is sales tax that will be used towards expenses in this budget. Okay, now on expenditures. Contributions to Upstate County Development Authority for $30,000. The Buchanan Health Department was getting, or will be budgeted, $5,000. Country Roads Transit, $10,000, and the Airport, $15,000. Those are the entities out of the, not part of our, that we're giving contributions to. They're going to fund events for Festival Friday, Strawberry Festival, and fireworks for a total of $16,000. We have a facade program again this year for $10,000. We've added $35,000 to housing enforcement to help in cleaning up distressed properties and to aid some of the citizens that need help doing that. We need to do repairs to the foundation doors and electrical panel of City Hall, but that cost will be shared with the utility boards. The water waste sanitary will all have their own separate budgets as well. The Police Department asks to increase police officers' wages to compete with other local law enforcement departments, the Sheriff's Department, and local counties and cities near us. This budget includes funding for a K-9 unit, in-car, in-body cameras, TASER replacement, and three new cruisers. We are trading in three old cruisers for that. The Fire Department asks for funding for medical equipment, turnout gear, reporting software, a thermal imaging drone, lockers, LED lights in the building, and a fire truck. The fire truck's about a half million dollar expense and will be financed. We have some funds to go towards this from the sale of an old truck, and the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department will contribute towards this purchase as well. The Street Department asks for two additional full-time employees. Additional funds will be contributed towards park improvements. The expense, the expense side of the Gateway West Project is in this budget. They also ask to purchase a loader, a side-by-side SUV, ATV, is that what it is really, an SUV? And a concrete truck, that's the big item. The, this truck can be used for city utility departments, too. The concrete truck would be financed, and it'll cost about $150,000. Projects in this budget include sidewalks and lighting and paving of North Canal Street from Main to the Train Depot. Paving South Canal Street from Main to Wendy's and other paving projects was funded for $135,000. So in other words, we have paving projects in there for 135, and those will be, once they're evaluated, the streets are evaluated, Jerry will come back and ask the council which ones they want to address first. We also worked on stormwater projects. There's funding in there for $150,000, and additional $50,000 will be added to that budget in 2021. That's when the Sanitary Department will begin some of those major projects. The Stalker Youth Center asks for one full-time staff person. They need software to help track those various programs and participations, and they need some building repairs done. I also placed, or we also placed, the possibility of a payment to complete the SYCC gym in the budget, although we are still awaiting word of possible funding from the abandoned mine land grant. Okay, so we, in the budget, we addressed items that we've talked about in our sales tax presentations. All of those things that we talked about in the sales tax presentations were addressed. We, big-ticket items, you'll see in your packet the budget that will actually go to the state of West Virginia, whereby you looked at each line item. You were looking at phones and electric and salaries and retirement. They only want to know the lump sum. So the bigger ones was Street Department's budget is $1.5 million, $1,588,000. Police Department's, $1,329,644. The Fire Department, $793,000. $1,588,000. Police Department's $1,329,644. The Fire Department's $793,200, and then the Stockard Youth Center is $400,006. Now, the Stockard Youth Center gets quite a bit money back in for just their programs for basketball and drill. That, that was the summary of it. Those are the larger, larger items and the expenses in the budget, and there it is.
Counsel, we've talked quite a lot about this the past couple of months as we've reached this point. We know that we have to have this proposed budget to the state by the end of this month, so we have to act on it tonight. I would entertain a motion that we approve the budget for general fund fiscal year 2020-2021.
So moved.
I think I heard Ryland's first and Albaugh second the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Thomas.
Ambi, in light of what's happened to the stock market in the last 30 days, especially with the Corona issues and the collapse of oil prices, do you anticipate the state may be asking for a higher contribution for a pension?
No, they've already submitted that, and it's already submitted for 10%. That's what they sent me a letter on.
They, they can't make an adjustment to that?
Um, I'm, I'm not going to say anything that the state can and can't do, but I know that they have sent me a letter and said that the contribution is the same as it was last year. They usually run those actuaries and then give you-
Market's lost about one-third in the last 45 days. I would anticipate that they may contact us later and say they need an extra percent or two. I mean, who knows? We don't know for sure what's going to happen. And then as far as the, the adoption of the PEIA, have adjustments to make yet for that, or are we keeping it under our current assumption that we weren't going to make a change?
I did not change that part of the budget. It would take me, you know, I'd have to go through and calculate all those singles and families, and, and I really didn't have time to do that, but I do see-
We got some good news maybe coming down the table.
Oh, I, I did a couple real quick, just with, just if everybody had family coverage in particular departments, and I saw, just in a couple departments, I saw easily pulling $50,000 out of those. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Ambi? We have a motion and a second on the table. I'd, any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of approving the 2020-2021 budget for the general fund, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Minutes reflect that the budget was approved unanimously. F3, approval of ordinance 443 authorizing the purchase of property at 15 Madison Street. Before we turn her over to Tom, I have some talking points that I'd like to bring to the council's attention, and this is dated as of today. First, a committee was designated to further evaluate the acquisition of this property containing 1.032 of an acre, whose membership included Mayor McCauley, City Recorder Sanders, Councilor CJ Robbins, Ambi Jenkins, Jerry Arnold, Brad Hawkins, and Buchanan Real Estate Appraiser Stan Rexret. Two, the building was assessed, was accessed, I'm sorry, was accessed multiple times, and the group believes that there is great potential use of and value respecting the current building located upon these premises. Three, this property is highly desirable to our city's other operations, either adjacent to or across the street from citizens' property. That is the Chase Lot, excuse me, Jawbone Park, the public safety complex, the Stockard Youth and Community Center totaling about seven acres. We also have a map up there that shows you all those different properties that the city presently is titled with. Five, I'm sorry, four, the city's 2025 comprehensive plan unanimously adopted by this council specifically calls for continued development and enhancement of our city parks, including Jawbone Park. Five, parking is at a premium in our downtown, and with expanded events at Jawbone, the public safety complex, and Stockard, this property is highly strategic to the city's future operations and sponsorship of events all within a block or two of this location, while adding dozens of parking spaces, green space, public art, et cetera. Six, the value of this property well exceeds the purchase price of $200,000 even without the $100,000 gift back to Stockard's Capital Campaign. In fact, six comparables for downtown real estate were generated indicating a price per square foot as follows. A, $5.28, B, $4.66, C, $5.74, D, $10.71, E, $3.79, and F, $5.88. Special thanks to project committee member Stan Rexret of the Century 21 for generating the square footage information for our consideration. The per-square-footage value for the bank's Madison Street property is $4.45, less than all of the other above comparables except for one. When factoring in the Citizens Bank gift back provision of $100,000, the effective square-footage acquisition price for this property is $2.22. Seven, about 75% of the current lot is concrete, and the current market value to pour 0.76 of an acre of property with concrete is $194,000, according to Jerry Arnold and Brad Hawkins. Eight, the addition of the $100,000 gift enhances the city's AML grant application seeking $3.8 million. That is, it evidences our commitment to the project. Our opportunity for grant success is substantially elevated with this gift. We will notify the state immediately upon council's acceptance of the gift. Nine, the city has the means funding available to smoothly acquire the property either through application of A, rainy day fund, B, combination of council discretionary funds and rainy day, or C, 100% financing with rates being at all-time historic lows presently. Number 10, those that insist on a specific plan for the actual use of this property miss the point. The property is needed, and time is sensitive as there are other suitors seeking to acquire the property. We will work out the details later as to the precise number and location of parking spaces, the uses and renovation of the existing building, added green space, public art, lighting, sound equipment, seating, et cetera, after holding a special meeting to solicit public input on future development of this 1.03 acre parcel, probably about the 1st of July. We will bring all constituencies together to consider design and usage of this property, for example, Create Buchanan Festival Fridays, Gamble Amusement Shane Turner, the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, Stockard, Art 26201, the City Landscape Committee, and Horticulturist Dixie Green, et cetera. Eleven, if our city determines to finance all or any portion of this purchase, again, I've said it twice, interest rates are at historic lows. If you're borrowing, that doesn't work out so good if you're trying to get a return on your investment. Twelve, the members of our due diligence committee have performed an excellent job, and will be happy to weigh in on proceeding with their recommendation for the city to acquire this property, many of our members being in attendance this evening. Tom, would you like to read this ordinance by caption only, and then we'll hear from the council?
Sure. The council has before ordinance number 443 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance approving the purchase of all of that lot or parcel of land and all the buildings and appurtenances thereupon and therein to belonging situated fronting on the south side of Madison Street with a commonly known address of 15 Madison Street presently titled in the name of Citizens Bank of West Virginia Incorporated, and specifically authorizing the net expenditure of $200,000 in municipal funds for said purchase. This is the second of two readings.
I would entertain a motion that we bring before the council ordinance 443 on second and final reading.
So moved.
I think I heard Albaugh first and Ryland second. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner.
Well, I appreciate your reading those points to us. I, I still, I disagree with the fact that we should move forward with the purchase of a property without having the fully developed plan in place to, that we would like to realize for this property. In addition to some of my concerns last time, I still would like to see a hard copy of the appraisal. I'd like to just see it. I'd like to look at it. I, I, I hear the numbers that you're, that you're quoting, but I'd like to see them to make a decision on this. And newly, this, for, for this council meeting, I, I think it's, quite frankly, I think it's, I think it's certainly now, now so more than ever premature for us to move forward on this. When we, you know, are in the, we're in a situation where we have some uncertain times ahead of us financially, potentially, with the effects of what's going on in our, in our society right now. We, our revenues could very well be down. Our expenses certainly aren't going to go down, and I would, I would like to not, I, I certainly don't want to go into our rainy day fund to purchase this property. I agree with you, if it's going to happen, it should be financed because rates are low. But I just, I, I believe that we should hold off on this certainly before, until we know what's going to happen relative to the health crisis that we're, that we're facing right now, and what monies we may need available, you know, to, to help us as, as we go through the future. So that's, I, I still, I still have concerns about this. I still, I still think it's, I still would like to see a plan for it. You know, we, we've, I just, I don't, I don't like that we're, we're just moving so swiftly through this without taking a step to consider what, what, what could be, what it, what it, what its full potential could be.
Thanks, Robbie. Remember, we're saving a half a million dollars on our insurance, so we do have some extra funding coming our way. Anybody else had any discussion on the motion?
I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I just want people to know that I abstained voting on this last time because I'm on the board at Stockard, and I feel I should be voting on something that had money to do, spending the money. Also, this, I think, don't you always have two appraisals and, and kind of go in between a high and a low on a piece of property and not just one appraisal, especially when you're dealing with a big piece of property like this, and it's not for an individual, it's for the city, for the people. And one other thing, number seven, the $194,000 that Jerry and Brad came up with for the concrete, is that going to include a piece of property that Chase Bank gave us a few years ago?
The $194,000 is the added value from having 76 hundredths of an acre already concreted. So the property is worth even more as a result of the way it's presently set. So that's our point. We're, we're not, we're not looking at any-
That's what I'm understanding about, okay.
We're not looking at any more concrete right now. In fact, we'd like to add more green space, we think. And that, that's going to come out of the plan, the conversation that we'll have with all the stakeholders.
So will that include that Chase property that we were given a few years ago?
That, that, the sub, the $194,000 concrete value only applies to the property that we're seeking to acquire.
And I, and personally, I'd still like to have had a town hall meeting on this. And, you know, it's not that I don't want the property, we do need the property, but I just feel people should have had it, would have-
And we'd be planning on that.
Okay.
I'll make a comment.
Mr. Thomas.
I appreciate what Robbie said and Pam said. I'll, I'll state what I said the last time we discussed this. The, I think, Dave, I called you the first 30 or 60 days after your election, and said, from my standpoint, I felt one of the long-term visions that I sort of embraced for the, for the community was to go out and borrow some money because the interest rates were so low back then also, three years ago, and that there were areas that I thought would come up potentially for sale in the, in the future that the city really needed to acquire. And I think this is one of those properties. I'm going to vote yes for it. I'm not particularly, I'd rather just go down and give the bank $100,000 in a straight-out purchase. But, you know, when you're working and working with organizations and people, sometimes you have to compromise a little bit here and there to get what you're looking for long-term. I'm glad you put in there about the town hall meeting, because I think it's really critical that we, we develop a good plan for that particular piece of property. I also think the Latham House property at some point in time is critical for us as a community to have that as part of that whole area. And, you know, I, I made the comment, I think last council meeting or the Lord Board meeting, that when you look at this city, what we're accomplishing, you know, this coronavirus will, will be behind us hopefully sooner rather than later. But what we've implemented in some things with the sales tax and the PEIA, we don't want to go willy-nilly spending money, but at the same time, we're going to have resources to do some very important infrastructure things that are needed for this community. And I think this, this is one of those areas that I think is critically important for us long-term. So, I mean, I have some issues I'm not particularly pleased about, but I think overall, it's the right thing to do, acquire it now. And it's up to us on council and the new members of council to make sure that we made a, a very good investment in this piece of property.
Thanks, Dave. Mr. Ryland?
I support the acquisition of this property. I think it's an investment in the expansion of our capacity for events, increasing arcing, green space, expanding Jawbone Park. We also have a, a process that we utilize when we revision, re-envision Jawbone Park, that we hold public planning sessions, we identify, all groups can identify what they'd like to see in this project. We submit all these findings to design professionals, architects, and they put together visual interpretations of how to accomplish these, these expectations. So we've done it before. I think this is, is, blends in perfectly with that process. And, but property acquisition, once you've sat by and, and overthought things and missed a few deals, do you begin to refine the process of evaluating acquisitions? And when certain things come about and you can, you're able to acquire them, you need to seize that moment and acquire the property, and then we'll follow up with the thoughtful process to see how to incorporate it into our, our bigger plan. So I support this, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Albaugh?
I agree. Can't not believe I almost say this completely. David Thomas, I was very pleased with your remarks, and I appreciate that because I support this 100%. We had an opportunity, and as business people on this council, it's our responsibility to seize that moment when you can, because we got, really got a good deal. And it's, the deal is just not the money to buy in the property. The good thing is what it's going to turn into, okay? That's why I got here and looked. Look at all that green, and, and it's going to be here. Whatever goes and happens there, it's going to be for the people of this community, not for anyone, or just us. It's for everybody. So we've used vision, love, respect for the future, and I'm happy with our decision, and I'm for it.
Thanks, Mr. Albaugh. Mr. Sanders?
I also expressed my support for the project. I hear what Robbie and Pam have said about additional appraisals or getting appraisals and so forth. If we were in a situation where heavy negotiation going back and forth, and it started at three, and it was maybe offered 150, and it'd go, you know, on and on, then the appraisals could help in those negotiations. But it's, it's, I think anyone can look at that piece of property, knowing now what we plan to do as far as using it as an extension of Jawbone Park, marrying the other properties that are resided in the future and so forth, it's worth, it's well worth $200,000. As CJ said, sometimes as a businessperson, you know, you pass up a deal, and you look back and you regret it. This is one of those times, I think, that we would regret it if we were to pass on this and not have another opportunity to move forward. I think that in 10 years, we'll look back with pride, and more importantly in 10 years, the citizens of this community, and the people that come in to take advantage of what Buchanan had to offer, and that's what I'm going to be all about between now and election time, and if I'm re-elected and beyond, and whatever, I'm going to be all about bringing more and more people into Buchanan. There's no reason this community can't be thriving. Yes, we have a, a problem- Yes, we have a problem right now. We have an epidemic, and we've got to get through this. But when we get through this, we're going to come back strong, and we're going to utilize every piece and every inch and every acre we have in this town to draw people from outside of Buchanan in to enjoy what it is that we have.
Well said. Well, it'll come as no surprise that I strongly recommend that council act favorably upon the second reading of ordinance 443, which Mr. O'Neil has read by caption. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner has indicated his dissent. Everyone else has supported it. Next up, Mr. O'Neil, ordinance 444, zoning change, property owner AT&amp;T Enterprises, property on Brushy Fork Road from Military District to C2 Highway Commercial, first reading.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two zoning ordinances the council have considered tonight. This is for the A&amp;T Enterprises property on Brushy Fork Road. I'll read the ordinance by caption. Ordinance number 444 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 and ordinance number 384 of the City of Buchanan. By rezoning that property with a commonly known address of 937 Brushy Fork Road, identified as Corporation District Map 33 Parcel 1.1, and currently titled in the name of A&amp;T Enterprises LLC, from MIL Military District to C2 Highway Commercial District, is the first of three readings. There will be a public hearing on this ordinance prior to third reading and adoption.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard Mr. O'Neil. This is the Aaron Harris property that will be developed for three different businesses, I believe. So, we're trying to facilitate the development of that property that's within the city limits, by the way, or we wouldn't be acting on this. I'd entertain a motion that we approve ordinance 444 on the first reading.
So moves.
Okay. Who's that?
Man, that was tough. I heard Rylands, and I think Thomas--
I think Thomas.
Thomas, the motion.
He beat you, CJ.
Rylands, the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Again, this is the first of three readings.
I mean, the owners came to a special meeting of the planning commission, presented their case to the planning commission, recommended the council to approve this.
That's right. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. This reflects that the motion carries unanimously. And similarly, the property right beside it, this would be approval of F5, approval of ordinance 445, zoning change of property owner Upshur County Development Authority, property on Brushy Fork Road from Military District to Industrial District. And this would be for the cannabis plant that is scheduled to go in. Is that right, Mr. O'Neil?
That's correct.
You want to take this up for us?
So, both of these properties, the properties rezoned by both ordinance 444 and 445, were at one time, well, 445 is currently owned by the Development Authority, the Aaron Harris property was previously owned by the Development Authority. This is for the balance of that property that was not sold to Aaron Harris, which is adjacent to the armory. So, I'll read that by caption as well. Ordinance number 445 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 244 and ordinance number 384 of the City of Buchanan. By rezoning that property identified as Corporation District Map 33 Parcel 1, entitled in the name of Upshur County Development Authority, from M Military District to I Industrial District, excuse me, Industrial District, this is the first of three readings, and there will be a public hearing prior to third reading and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. It's the same drill as the previous ordinance, folks. I would entertain a motion that we approve ordinance 445 on first reading. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just one question. I think I saw it, yeah. It already went through the planning commission also. Okay, thanks.
Sure did. Any further discussion, any further questions? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. This reflects that the motion carries unanimously. And F7 is an idea by Art 26201. Oh, gosh. I don't think the right letter got in the packet.
I don't think she heard.
I was looking for it, too.
Anyway, there is a proposal. I don't think we've got the right letters in here for us. The proposal by Art 26201 is that until such time as we duly create an arts council or arts commission that would include representatives from Art 26201, Buchanan Community Theater, the Upshur Arts Alliance, a couple of city official representatives, representative from Stocker-- until we work through that mechanism, and we're probably six to 12 months out from it, we know that there will be folks seeking to use the Colonial Theater for gigs. The most recent example of which is the Upshur Youth Art Exhibit, which was supposed to be going on right now, but we, because of the coronavirus, we had to just let people look through the door at it. I've been taking good photos, not Skinner-esque quality photos.
Well, they've been good pictures.
Pictures of things. Well, the proposal by Art 26201 is that there be a committee until we have a formal council or commission or whatever we call it, that would do the day-to-day, week-to-week approvals of gigs in the thing. I know for a fact, as I'm trying to think back what's in this letter, that it would include me, Ambie Jenkins, Bryson Van Nostrand, I think, two members, one of Art 26201, one of Buchanan Community Theater, the Arts Director for Buchanan Upshur School Systems, and I think the Arts Person, an Arts Person from West L.A. College. It's like eight or nine people.
I support Art 26201. Go ahead.
I think that's it. There's like eight or nine. It's probably an odd number. It's either seven or none, I bet. I can't believe I don't have the letter in the packet. But anyway, that's their pitch, that in the interim, we let that committee approve gigs in the theater.
I think it should include somebody from the Upshur County Arts Alliance also.
Yeah, I think there is a representative on there, yeah. But if not, I'll add it.
I didn't hear you say that, but I guess.
So, you're not going to put any council people on that? Because if I'm here, I would really like to be on that committee.
Two city reps is what they were calling for, myself and Mrs. Jenkins. We were trying to cover the bases as much as we could legally, finance the whole bit. It's an arts-driven entity.
Well, it's still in process.
Yeah. We can change it at the next meeting.
I mean, you could always still help Art 26201 by becoming a member of that and making donations and whatever. I mean, I'm just talking to just so everybody wants to be on the board.
I'm talking about Canyon Community Theater thing, so.
What if we did this? What if we passed this on concept with the hammer, the fine tuning of who's going to be on there since the list isn't here right now?
Yeah, that works.
I like that idea.
So moves.
Mr. Sanders should raise the motion.
I second it.
I second it already.
Everybody's claiming to second. This is going to turn volatile. We have a motion and a second. Sanders can determine who it was. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to comments and announcements.
Before we get into that, Mr. Mayor, we have a question. A question from Mr. Scott Preston.
Okay.
All right, Scott.
He wants to be on the committee, too.
Yeah. Members of council, many of our residents have lost income streams. Will the city introduce a grace period for all paid services? Early in the emergency meeting, I heard no services cut, but ultimate payment is resident's responsibility. Did that cover water, sewer, and waste services? And again, that's from Scott Preston.
Well, there's a difference between non-termination versus forgiveness of utility expenses. We do not have statutory authority or administrative rule authority from the West L.A. Public Service Commission to forgive utilities. Mr. O'Neil?
There's also the issue of bond covenants. We could be in violation of our bond covenants if we gave forbearance on utility rates. That's just, we don't have the legal authority to do that.
But no one will have their services terminated for the next 30 days. We'll reevaluate after 30 days, and we may extend that even further than that. But I'm not aware of any measure by any city. I don't think we have the statutory abilities to forgive utility expenses. It's not one of the 63 enumerated powers that municipal corporations have.
Well, you know, we had one viewer.
Yeah. I concluded the question from the--
How you doing, Scott?
Mrs. Alba, anything to bring to council?
I don't. I think this was a very positive meeting, and I'm proud of all of you.
I don't like looking back on my shoulders.
I don't like that either. But, Mary, I beg, go ahead, be excused. I've got to go to work.
Mrs. Alba, you may be excused.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Buckle?
I just want to say, I hope everybody in this time that we're going through, we're all have a heightened sense of what's going on around us, and we need to be extra kind to each other, check on your neighbors. I'm sure there's elderly people that are scared to death about what's going on and needing help, and even a phone call, maybe every day, just check on somebody would be good for them and for you, so.
Thanks, Pam. Mr. Rylands?
You never know what individuals are going through in their own private lives, but in this case, we know the whole community is confronted with facing this pandemic. So, I personally think it's bringing out the best in a lot of people. I've seen things happening in public that support that premise, and I would hope that we all become a little more altruistic and support, do things that are in the community's best interest and that we'll be proud of when we get on the other side of this. So, we just need to pull together.
Thanks, you, Dan. Mr. Skinner?
I would encourage folks, as they can, to get takeout from our local restaurants. I know it gets expensive, but our friends and neighbors who own these restaurants are, many of them have sunk their heart and souls and all their cash and everything they've got into these restaurants. And as CJ knows, running a restaurant's a 24/7 job. Even when the restaurant's not open, you're still working. And, you know, support our retail establishments that are open. You know, this community is, Buchanan's a big giant family, and we need to make sure that we're there for each other during this time. We certainly don't want any of our family members to be hurting when we could do something about it. So, that with, of course, being intelligent and aware of surroundings and keeping distance away from people. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to go in and just, even if we can't necessarily afford to eat out every day, to go in and check on our folks, our friends and neighbors who are operating these businesses. I know that they would appreciate it. So, everyone just continue to be safe and care about each other during this time.
Very good. Mr. Thomas?
I guess I would say a couple of things. One is that I've been blind for 27 years, and after retiring from West L.A., the first year was very difficult for me. But I think what really saved me was reading. And I read 10 to 12 hours a day, and it's absolutely, you know, a lot of people don't read that much anymore. So, if you have an opportunity, you're going to self-quarantine yourself, get some books and read. It really can make a huge difference. Also, this time of year, you can go sit outside and listen to all the different animals out there, the birds, especially, I don't think half of them left this year during the winter. You know, I was hearing spring birds a month ago, and that's a very nice environment to read a book in also. And I had mentioned this to a few people, we don't know how long this thing's going to last, but there's a lot of creative people around, and maybe some of these creative people could take a look at a self-funding account for people to donate to, and then there would be a process if this thing lasts for a long time, to help out those people that have been displaced, you know, waitresses, other individuals that are going to be closed temporarily. We don't know how long for, but that's something to think about also. Sarah Campbell alluded to that a little bit when she said they could use more volunteers for the senior center. But watch out for your neighbors, help people that need help, and we'll get through this as a community. The federal government's going to do a lot of stuff. We don't know what it's going to be yet, but they're going to issue, you know, tax deferrals or actually make check payments to people. So, we're all in this together as a community, David, as you say, quite appropriately a lot of times. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sanders?
Well, it's part of my time to read a follow-up question from Scott Preston.
Okay.
And his follow-up is deferred payments, not forgiveness.
Ambie, we've worked with folks before, haven't we?
We absolutely work with people with deferred payments.
Okay, so Ambie has said we absolutely do work with--
Yes.
--people.
For deferred payments.
For deferred payments. Okay. All right. So, now, as we began the meeting, and it popped up on my phone, our neighbors to the north in Pennsylvania, Governor Wolf orders non-life-sustaining businesses to close physical locations. So, that's happened in the state of Pennsylvania, I would imagine.
It's coming our way.
Coming our way. For West Virginia, it's, you know, serious. It's a serious situation. We all know that. I've been encouraged by the fast-moving moves that's come out of City Hall. I wish I would have said this when Kelly was here, but, you know, Kelly's disseminating information at a record pace. And what I like about the fact that she disseminates information, she does it carefully but quickly and accurately, and I encourage everyone in Buchanan to keep an eye on our website and to keep an eye on those news releases coming out and to read them from start to finish, to keep an eye out as well for each other. We can't run around and poke our heads into our neighbors' houses like we maybe would in the past to the senior citizens and so forth, but we can certainly make a call and say I'm dropping something off on the front porch if they need it or whatever. It's going to be a tough few days, few weeks, possibly a few months, but we're resilient. And since my time here at City Recorder, I've found that this town is strong. I've always known the citizens were strong. I made a joke to Jerry Arnold one day. I said, you know, I just thought all the services, I thought you flipped a switch on Monday and everything ran, but that's not the case. A lot of hard-working people, their heart and soul's in it, and that's it. We're going to get through it.
Buchanan's strong.
Buchanan's strong. Hashtag Buchanan's strong.
Well, most of the kindness and supportive stuff has been already articulated by the other members of council. Check on your neighbors, that's for sure, but stay six feet away from them in the process. And if you need-- one other thing, the youth art exhibit, I felt so horrible for the kids last week when we were getting ready to kick off the dedication of the gallery. We will continue to have that art housed in the gallery. There are no other events going to take place in that place until they can have their day when we will dedicate that gallery. And it may be a few weeks from now, but we're going to do it. And if you need some token good news, at 11:59, it's the first minute of spring. So, there you have it. That's all I have.
Let's not wait for that. Let's go ahead and adjourn.
I'd have it, 9:15, I'd entertain a motion, we get out of here. We're out of here. Thanks, guys.